Okay, John Wurts here with Marissa Wagman and she is running for Conroe Independent School and she fits the position.
I've also served in a teaching program. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I live in that with violence, the silence inside of me. We see where fire starts to breathe. When I was late, I lit the voice inside of me. It is my mind right. Baby, it's my mind right. Baby, it's my mind right. I've also served in a teaching program. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I've also served in a teaching program. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for. I'm also a student in a community that I work for. I'm also a teacher in a community that I work for.
What in your mind separates you from your opponents?
Well, first, I've attended meetings since last October. I have seen a couple of my opponents attend their first meeting last month in which they stayed until the blackout and then they left. They missed the best part of the meeting. They didn't get to see our CISD police force be honored for their latest award and accomplishment. And they also didn't get to see our coaches accept the award for the Lone Star Cup that the Woodlands High School just received. Participation, first and foremost, I knew going in the day that filing opened that I went in, first day, 8:30 in the morning, first went in. I gave the secretary 30 minutes to settle her desk and I was right there because I knew that I was ready to serve at that moment. My opponents all came in on the last day, the last two hours. So that's why I feel like I am ready to serve for this position.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, how much time do you think this position is going to take for you to do the right kind of job? And what's that going to take, where is it going to, you're going to have to give up to dedicate that much time?
That's a very good question. So I have sat down with both superintendents from the very beginning to really understand the job and what it requires. And time is one thing that it definitely requires. Of course, you have the monthly board meetings, you have the monthly school visits, you have miscellaneous opportunities to participate in activities. And preparation for the monthly meetings comes in a large notebook of information that you need to read prior to attending your meeting so that you're well informed on anything that might be a voting item or up for discussion. I will say, if I were to be elected and a new board member, I know the first six months, I'm really going to have to work side by side with many of the administrators. They are preparing that documentation so that I understand exactly what I'm looking at, so I don't make any rash decisions or vote on anything where I don't have a really clear understanding. Other than that, those are like the base things that you're kind of set and required to be participating in. But there's always more. There's going to be opportunities to meet with our legislatures, especially since we go into the new legislative session for 2019. There's going to be a lot of back and forth that's going to be imperative that all members of the board have an open communication line with each one of our representatives because as it stands now and from what I understand, the legislature is looking to cut $1 billion from our education funding. So it's going to be imperative that we stay on track. I didn't say when I was going to give up. I'm not sure if you want to give me an extra second.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I have stepped back from quite a few organizations just so that I can devote my time to this because again, this is not something that you can just show up at the last minute. So yes, some organizations, some volunteer activities, I'll be stepping aside from. And then of course, my work is flexible.
Katie, you brought up the money coming from the state legislature coming to us. Have you had the opportunity to review the upcoming year's budget?
For the...
2018, '19?
For CISD?
Yes.
Yes, I have gotten to take a look at it. We do have an increase in budget. Is that where you're going? Okay, yes, so we are going to have an increase in budget. There is also, you know, they showed the revenue that's coming in that's also increased. I did talk with our superintendent and 30% of that increase is coming from people moving here to Montgomery County. As you know, we have a trend over the last couple of years about 1,500 new students coming to Montgomery County as well as all sorts of new building, new subdivisions, new businesses coming here to Montgomery County. And that is helping raise that taxing amount. So it's not all valuation of property, it is incoming people. But yes, there is a much higher budget than was last year.
So with the increase of money coming in, the tax rate stayed the same.
Correct.
So if we have an increase of money coming in, why can't the tax rate be lowered?
Well, in part of that is the new people coming in. We also have some new expenditures in ways of building upgrades that we're doing in some of our schools as well as hardening our schools. We did add 16 new positions for our CISD police force. And we also added three new positions which are considered an administration position for counseling. So there have been some increases there, there have been some increases in staff. And so that's kind of where we're seeing the budget go a little bit higher.
Okay, but the budget's going higher and you have, do you know how much money you have sitting in the reserves?
So TASB requests that we hold about 25% of our operational expenditures, which is about three months of expenditures in reserve. And so I believe that's like $118 million of our budget. It might be a little bit more, but it's in that area. And so we do hold that as reserve. And then at the end of the year, we look at those monies. This past year, it was $10 million that they were able to use for some expenditures. They're looking to use buses, additional staff, and one or two other items that I don't recall right offhand. But yes, that 10 million is going to, oh, the debt service is what that was going to.
So some of it's going to debt service?
Correct, some of it's going to debt service, some of it's going to busing, some of it, new buses, and some of it is going to increase staff.
Okay, so... You answered the question, will you vote to limit budget increases to a factor based on student enrollment growth? You said yes.
Inflation plus student enrollment.
Yes, right. How do you feel about zero-based budgeting as it relates to this? And do you think that's a good idea to just universally increase budgets based on enrollment growth?
So I have talked with CISD about zero-based budgets, but the information that I've gotten from them is due to the way that the state pays us and the way that we receive funds, zero-based budgeting is a little bit more challenging because you don't exactly get the money when you think you're going to get the money. And so that's one of the reasons why they use the budgeting system that they do. Does that...
Well, I understand that they base their budgets on last year's numbers. That's the only way they can do it is to reach back. So it would make it a little more challenging. But you could look at possibly adjusting your budget commensurate with the growth rate and still on a zero-based budget model to target expenses a little bit better. It would seem like a better approach. That's why I was asking the question because just to universally say with increases in student population, we're going to increase budget, does that mean that all teachers get a raise commensurate with student population increase? I mean, where does that stop is my point.
Gotcha. So in the last couple of years, they have increased the teacher pay by 2%. That is something that they would like to keep doing. I would have to look a little bit more into the budget, I think, and understand it a little bit better in order to truly answer your question with a little bit of wet thought.
Good. What do you know about Common Core in school?
I know that when my daughter was in sixth grade and Common Core was introduced into her math, all of a sudden, my engineering husband who has a master's degree was now ineligible to teach her math. The Common Core system that was introduced was such a roundabout way of coming to the end of a problem that there were so many opportunities for mistakes. In our family, math is math. There is no special way of doing it, there is no soft and easy, you know, try two or three different ways to get to the end of the problem. Math is math. And Common Core, at least in that instance, really looked to confuse children, looked to create more problems, thinking outside of the box when all they had to do was go through a simple formula as you have done for, you know, since math was discovered and the way to do it was discovered.
Where is the Conroe Independent School District at now with Common Core?
So the math policies that were instituted when my daughter was in sixth grade, she's a sophomore now, have since reverted back to the regular teaching. I will say though, if you look at some of the textbooks that are out there, they still state that they are part of a Common Core curriculum. I've found that to be in English textbooks especially.
Okay, you mentioned standardized testing. What mandates are there? Are they federal or state or local? And how many tests are mandated and how many do you think there should be? And how will you go about changing that?
So standardized testing, standardized testing really kicked off during the George Bush years with Leave No Child Behind. And then the Obama administration came in with another level of standardized testing. And that was all on the federal level, pushed down to the states. So now we have the STAR test and we also have TEACs. And I will be honest, I'm not sure what the acronym actually stands for. All I know is they have to take it during certain grade periods as they go through school. And if the school doesn't reach a certain passing level, there's a negative sort of dean to that school. Bless you. Not only in ratings, but also in finances. And so standardized testing, what that does in the classroom is anybody that has a student right now knows that the first semester is all standardized testing preparation. Once the tests are taken, then the teachers have a little bit more freedom coming around in the second semester to catch up on all of the other elements that they need to cover before the end of the year. And sometimes they can do that very quickly and then it's all movies the last two weeks. Or they are actually learning information all the way up until the end of school with a final exam. So what can I do as a school board member to handle or to sort of change how we are handling standardized testing through the legislature? It is sending the right people to Austin and making sure that they know what standardized testing is really doing within our school district.
Do you know our legislators? We have three or four.
Right, so Mr. Kehoe is returning and I know that the Republican candidate, Mr. Toth, is going. Can I say that? Right, if they win. I know that Senator Creighton is very well aware of standardized testing and Will Metcalf is also very aware of standardized testing.
You said Cecil Bell?
I don't know him personally.
So are there dozens and dozens of tests that they have to take, one every day or one every week?
No, no, it's the TEAC and the STAR that are the two most prevalent here.
Just one a year or one a semester?
No, no, they do it, science, math, and English and writing. So they'll handle their writing.
So what we've heard is on the front end, at least Conroe Independent has blocked Common Core from coming into the school system. But we've also heard in some cases, it kind of slips into the back door. Maybe not in math, but in history, you know, which could be problematic in general, English to a certain degree. So there's another one called International Baccalaureate, IB. Are you familiar with that?
I am not, no.
Okay, so Magnolia, at least the high school that's right there on 1488, 149, they've got it across their school that they are an IB school. And it's basically the same thing as UN Saul Walensky. You know who Saul Walensky is? So you might want to look into that because that can be a pretty big issue. Just clarification on the budget. You said 25% is typically what TASB, I think if I got the acronym right, suggests on capital. And is that the unassigned fund balance? Okay, and how much, again, did you say that was?
I believe it's around $118, $120 million.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I heard 115 or 120. Okay, pass.
Which of the current CISD board members, from your observations, most closely shares your values, your goals, your objectives?
Well, I'm very close to Melanie Bush. She and I have known each other through other associations. She and I served together on the Alder Bridge Village Association and served at another mother-daughter volunteer organization. So she and I both care very deeply about school safety, mental health, and are very, very pro-teacher and of course, very pro-CISD. The other board members, I do know Skeeter, from Louisiana, we always say Aver, but...
Different spelling, he's Hubert. If it is German, clarify that for me.
Oh, do you? I do know him, but I don't know him very well. Ray Sanders has been very kind in giving information and observation and has really helped me to sort of look in and around for information for any questions that I may have. I don't know the other board members as well. I know that Mr. Kidd does live here in South County, I believe in the Woodlands. And I believe that Detron Williams lives in Conroe, but I don't know them personally.
Okay, I'll try to give a short one here for the remainder of my time. The term conservative is bandied about quite a bit. How would you define, how would you measure whether a person is conservative or not?
So there's a lot of ways to look at that. Some people look at a conservative as being somebody that's anti-abortion, that is for gun rights, personal gun rights, and also fiscally conservative by ways of taxing. They believe that government should be small and that should be led by the people. And so that's kind of, and then of course, Christian, religious, religious-based, probably the best way to put it.
So which of those do you agree with? Like you said, some people, I'm wanting more specifically for your view.
Right, oh, gotcha, okay. So for me, a conservative means to be very conscientious of our tax dollars, be very aware of where things are going and what we're spending them on. I don't believe that government is supposed to take care of everything. I believe that there's a responsibility of each American citizen to take care of much of the things that they need on their own. The way that our government is set up, we have those freedoms to get up, to get out, to find a job, to create a life, and to find whatever we feel that ability of freedom and happiness is. I have grown up around guns, so I have no fear of guns. And I also believe that an individual has the right to own one. It states it in the Constitution. I also believe very much in the sanctity of life. And I believe that that is a true, open point, something that's very important. And so to me, those are the things that constitute a conservative thought, the way that I would look at things. But again, I think that small government is important and a government run by the people is important.
I want to go back to the budget here for a minute. If we have a surplus of funds, which we do, do you think it's appropriate that the schools are getting the children to go out and sell candy and items to be able to take care of playground equipment while our tax dollars have already paid and are sitting there and could be used to take care of the playground equipment? They don't go out and sell candy bars to take care of the football stadium. But they do go out to sell candy bars and things for the school. Also, we have to deal with teachers not having school supplies, that they're providing these out of their own pockets instead of the school paying for it. I don't think that the school's responsible for everything, but that's part of the education process. I want in your opinion.
So I'll be honest, I know that when the kids sell the candy and the cookie dough and all that stuff, I'll be honest, I don't really know where that money is designated. But as a PTO member, as a parent-teacher organization member, I know that we would raise funds on behalf of the school. You know, we're the ones that can take those 10-cent box tops and turn them into laptop computers. We're the ones that kind of fill in the gap anytime there might be something that the school, an emergency comes up or something gets broken and it's not in the budget for fixing. As well as offering services to help the school save money instead of hiring maybe a paraprofessional. An example of that would be when I was PTO president at McCullough. We did staff what's called the drop-off room. And those ladies and gentlemen that volunteered would answer the phones, would take any drop-off lunches or schoolwork or anything of the sort. And instead of burdening the front office and taking away from anyone that might be coming to visit the school for business purposes or for, you know, to talk with counselors or teachers, our volunteer staff would handle all of that excess, therefore saving the school around $18,000 a year instead of having to hire someone to do that. Does that cover what you, I'm sorry, what you wanted? I know that was a lot.
That's okay, we're just sitting there with, when we have money that's sitting there. And the children are coming around knocking on doors telling us that they're selling this specifically for playground equipment. Why?
Right, so I know that...
Go ahead.
I know that when we do have a surplus, they do look for those extra items at the end of the year. Like I mentioned, this last year, they had $10 million left over. And so I know that they do look for those items, but at the same time, it's not always guaranteed. And so again, I don't know where the candy might go specifically. I would hope that administrators are budgeting appropriately from year to year knowing that things are breaking or in need of repair in order to plan for it for the next year and take care of it.
I'm not so sure that I want to give up my cookies. Go. Okay, so based on your answer regarding the proper balance of local and state funding, it would appear that you are against our tax dollars being used to supplement the funding of other districts. So in consideration of your stated position against standardized testing as well and your position on local school system retaining its tax revenue, can you envision any downside to that sort of localization?
For CISD, no, because we're actually very fortunate where we live. We have a well-working community.
We're very blessed. We have a lot of people moving here, we have student growth, we're able to keep our tax rates steady, our property values are going up. But this is bigger than just CISD. I'm asking you see a downside to that sort of localization by doing that?
Yes, there could definitely be a problem for districts outside of us. And you know, I grew up in El Paso, Texas, and I'm sure you're very well aware of the issues that are going on there with their school board. And you know, they've had some people go to jail, some people are under indictment. And they have a very, very small, a much smaller tax base than we do. And they're, you know, they are a little bit larger, but there's multiple school districts within that El Paso district space. So, but yes, for a very small rural district, it could be very challenging to have a 100% funding for themselves.
One more quick question with the balance of my time. You said, and I'll quote, "Standardized testing cripples the educational system. We need to continue fighting the state and federal testing mandates so they can be decreased." You actually mentioned this in a couple of your answers. So can you explain why you feel so strongly about that standardized testing is crippling? And do you think this is true for any... And do you think this is true for any and all standardized testing? And what I'm trying to find out is, are there, should there be some universal benchmarks for education in Texas and in the U.S. in particular?
Yes. So yes, we need to know what our kids are learning. We need to know if, year after year, they're able to finish whatever it is the requirement is for that year. Absolutely. But at the same time, like I mentioned before, teachers teach that standardized test for the first half of the year, and they're required to teach that because so much is hanging in the balance for school ratings, for money coming back from the state and from the federal government to the state to come back to us if we're not meeting all of those, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Guidelines. Whatever they think it is that we need, benchmark that we need to hit, if we're not hitting it, there is a penalty. I think what standardized testing does is it takes away the freedom of a teacher to explore and use whatever she thinks or he thinks is necessary to educate students within her area, within her district. It limits what she's able to do beyond the basic scope of whatever's on the test. You know, it's not unusual for a teacher to say, "If it's not on the test, don't teach it," because then they don't have time. They have to focus on whatever is required to get those kids to pass the standardized testing.
So you think that cripples the critical thinking skills of students?
Absolutely.
Basically.
Because that's the bottom line. Not only does it cripple them, it steals the opportunity for them to think and learn in multiple ways. I just think it's a shame that everything is focused around one test number or two test numbers, because, you know, kids going from second grade to third grade, there's such a great learning, you know, they just learn so much from one grade to another, and it can be miraculous. It can be over the summer through play and through games and different ways of, styles of teaching. I just think it's a shame that we send, you know, our educators go to school, they're so excited about coming into the classroom and sharing knowledge and, you know, having the opportunity to watch children learn and grow, but they are limited to a very, very narrow scope until the test is taken.
Loads commented.
Thumbs up.
Okay. Yep. All right. Go ahead, Larry. How many people are running in C I S D number one?
There are four candidates for position one.
Number one?
There is Kayl Inman. He is from North Conroe. He is a pastor. There is a lady named Kathleen Swisher, and she is a licensed counselor, and I understand this is a bucket list item for her. I don't know what that means. And there's also a doctor named Paul Piper, and I have yet to meet him at any event or...
All right. The one thing I, you may know something about if you do take just a second to explain it, but if you don't, that's fine. The one thing I think we do need to do is have a program to put seatbelts in all the testing buses that don't have them.
Yes. C I S D at the board meeting, not this past board meeting, but I believe it was the last board meeting, did discuss seatbelts and all of the new buses that they will be purchasing. They're looking at purchasing thirty. We'll have those seatbelts in them, yes.
But I'm concerned about the ones that don't have them.
Correct. I know that they are retiring some of those buses and/or selling them, and they'll go to other school districts, and they'll have the opportunity to place those in there.
Okay.
Okay. Let me ask you about another aspect of school safety. You know, it seems like most mass shootings occur in gun-free zones, and that's why a lot of people think that schools either need more guns on staff and teachers or just a whole bunch of police officers there. You mentioned here that you probably don't necessarily support having teachers and/or staff, I don't know, with guns. So is that a board decision? Did y'all vote on that? And how did that vote go? And what size officer staff do you have that's providing safety at the actual school sites?
All right. So I'm sure you all are familiar with the governor's marshal and guardian plan that he proposed when he had his meetings after the Santa Fe shootings. And basically, what they offered was the opportunity for administrators and teachers to carry a firearm on school property and/or have someone what they consider a guardian or someone that would be like a marshal on a plane, that would be a designated person on a school property that would have access to a weapon. Our C I S D police force, who is headed up by Chief Harness, we don't need that for C I S D. We really do have a fully trained and educated police force. Like I said earlier, they have just added sixteen more officers, as well as gone through and hardened just about every one of our schools, doing the front offices, putting things under glass, adding more security and video cameras. There's also a very intricate plan between the sheriff's office, the constable's office, Conroe Police Department, and C I S D. They're all overlapping to work together in case there was any type of emergency. And so, for C I S D, I don't believe that we need to engage in that, and I know that there will probably be some sort of discussion during the legislative session, but I think it would be very important that we, that our district, continue to have the options to make decisions at a board level that we are not going to implement that kind of plan at this time.
So how many armed officers are on each campus?
There is one, there should be one for each campus now. Some campuses share. Like, let's, if I could just use an example here, in the Woodlands, where we have Galatas and Powell very close together, they share an officer that goes back and forth, and then that officer will also travel down to the Woodlands High School. So they have some zones, but honestly, I don't have the exact amount of officers that we have on staff. I know that we have a fully-staffed department.
But some campuses would not have an officer on-site?
Not from open to close. They, like I said, they do share campuses. Correct. Now, I will say, just on top of that, one thing that C I S D does do is they encourage any of our sheriffs or constables. If you've ever been to McCullough, you know that two of our sheriffs come there during lunch, sit and do their paperwork. We've always got calls, what's happening at the school, but we encourage officers to stop by, use the bathroom. If we're having teacher lunches, come on in, have a teacher lunch with us. We're always encouraging the car to be there and the officer to come in and take a moment to have presence.
And you have somebody take care of that most days?
Sometimes they do. Absolutely, absolutely. Especially during special events, they'll pop in or they'll just park to make sure that, you know, things are going smoothly. There's nothing better than a visual.
Okay. Good.
So in Montgomery County, you're probably aware that there's a lot of money here, and it flows not only from the Woodlands but other communities, and there is a lot of building going on. A lot of people get rich off of that building. They get rich off of building, concrete, mortar, taking bonds out. Big business in Montgomery County. So when there's a bond that's coming up, whether it's for the last school bond in C I S D in Magnolia or the Woodlands Parkway extension, flags go up with all of these folks over here, all of us. So I guess, looking at a potential for a bond next year, where are we? How many, do you know about how many schools that we have? And on average, are we at or near capacity in fifty percent or seventy-five percent of those that warrant new brick-and-mortar schools and, of course, a bond, which will take us even more in debt past, what is it, 1.1 billion? Yeah. So are you familiar with kind of where we are and the capacity drives everything, right?
Sure. So at the last board meeting in September, the board was asked to start an exploratory committee regarding the possibility of a new bond with presentation in January of 2019.
Can I ask you a quick question related to that? Who's on that exploratory committee?
That was not, that information was not produced. They did show some of the names that I believe are going to be on the rezoning committee, and those were on slides that you could probably ask C I S D for. But I did not see the list for the exploratory committee regarding the bond.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So the way that C I S D works is they don't look to add another brick-and-mortar school until you're at 120% capacity of the individual school that is being considered. So, and now with the new sort of hardening of schools, portables are becoming less and less of an option because they can't be protected like a brick-and-mortar school can. You know, you can close off all the doors, but with portables, there's still outside access. And so, so that's something that they're having to consider with schools that, you know, that have more portables than others. There are lots of communities, new subdivisions that are being built. There's one that's coming in off of 242. They know that already, that that is in the planning stages, and so, of course, they're looking at their numbers right now to see what the possibility is for handling that, but also looking forward, knowing that those properties are going to be under 500,000, and so they will be family homes with, you know, with an expected student population. So that's how they go about assessing at 120% capacity before they'll start. And, of course, they like to rezone if they can, and the first people they rezone are always apartment complexes because they're the ones that are the most fluid, whereas housing subdivisions, you have a little bit more stability with families staying year to year. They're more easy to expect students returning.
So would you advocate, we got 120 million in the bank, would that reduce the bond that we would need if you took some of that money to build some, put towards the bridge and more?
Now, I know that in the last bond, I believe there was some money that they did use and pay cash for some repairs and updates to some current facilities. I know that there are some facilities that they're looking to do that to in the coming years that may or may not be part of the bond, just dependent upon if they can use those unassessed funds.
Okay. We got time for one more.
Okay. Go for it, Bill. In the last legislative session, as well as at the recent Republican Party's Texas State Convention, school choice was a very big topic. Please give us your views on school choice, pros and cons, how do you like to see that go down?
All right. So this can be a very sensitive, very sensitive topic. I know that the Republican, there are factions in the Republican Party that are very, very in, very much into charter schools. There are different entities that are funding the push for the privatization of schools. I personally, especially, and I'll use C I S D as an example, I personally don't want to see the diversion of funds because a school might be lagging behind. Sam Houston is the school that caused C I S D to have a B rating this time. It only takes one school to not meet the minimized standards, and an A school cannot have more than one, you know, cannot have one school. It affects the rating. You can't have, you can't get an A rating if you have a school that didn't meet the minimum standards. And so what I've seen with C I S D is a massive swarming of plans to bring that school up instead of give vouchers to get everyone to leave. What they've done is they, you know, they've assessed the school, they've assessed the population, they've changed the principal, they've brought in a behavioral liaison, they've brought in a family liaison, everything they possibly can to help invigorate that school and bring them up to standard. I would much rather see that than the diversion of funds to private schools that don't necessarily have to follow the same standards, that can pick and choose the students that they want. I realize that everybody would like to have their students behave and be the top-notch student to get top-notch grades, but the problem with that is then you, once you cherry-pick all your favorite kids out, then you leave the rest of the system with behavioral issues, maybe children that need special ed. You have separated the population, and I think that that's unfair and unnecessary. Now, I will say, coming from New Orleans, where the misappropriation of funds for all of those years crumbling schools, there was absolutely no way that when we lived there, that our children were going to attend public school. We were going to eat top ramen if we had to, to make sure that they had proper education in proper facilities. And I know that after Katrina, they did start to offer more vouchers to the very, very lower, lower end of the poverty scale, but for the most part, everybody is required, you know, if that is their choice, as it should be in any instance, if you pay into the system, you can go there and attend school, and it should be a good school. But if you choose to go to a religious school or some other type of specialized school, then I think that is your choice to do that, and it is your choice to pay that.
Okay. All right. So if you want to take up to five minutes now, do your closing or wrap it up?
Well, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I don't have a long speech or really any giant closing. I think you get a good idea of who I am, the level of involvement that I'll bring to the table, and the willingness to sit down and speak with anyone who has a question. If I don't know the answer, I will get it for you. If I don't know what to do, I will ask for your counsel, and I'll look to make the best decision with all the information that I have, in the interest, of course, of our district, of our taxpayers, and of our students and teachers. So if there aren't any more questions, that is, that's it.
All right. But we appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you.
And for your time tonight and for running.